Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February 1st, 2022 meeting work session of the Planning Commission. Before we begin this afternoon, we'd like to make a presentation.
Can you imagine? I'll take a picture. I'm okay. Thank you.
It is indeed. It is a, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Because I'm not hearing myself, and that usually doesn't work very well. It's indeed a pleasure to provide this honor for one of our former members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Peter Youngblood. You know, it's a rare honor when you have someone who serves with such distinction, particularly when they bring ethics and integrity to the process. Serving for seven years, Peter has done it for-
Eight years.
Eight years. Peter has done a phenomenal job for the city of Portsmouth. And on behalf of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and the citizens of this great city, we'd like to award Peter this plaque. The Planning Department acknowledges Vice Chairman Peter Lungblood for seven years of service to the Planning Commission. Eight years. December 7th, 2021. Peter, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you, sir. He fails to mention that in a prior life, we were both colonels in the Army Reserve in Richmond at about the same time, although I don't think we ever met there.
I don't think so.
Yeah, but I'm going to say we go way back.
Yeah, Peter, thanks again for your-
You bet, thank you.
Congratulations for your service.
So the commission members, it's been fun. I've enjoyed working with you. Well, it's been great, and I wish you all the best.
We need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy trails.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, we are going to proceed with our staff presentations on the applications you will have before you this afternoon during your regular session. Our first one is use permit 22-01, and Julie Chop will present that staff report.
Okay. Good af- oh, let me take this off. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This use permit application involves the property at 600 Court Street. The approximately 0.087 acre property is in the downtown T4 zoning sub-district and the downtown design overlay district. The property contains a one-story, 3,424-square-foot brick building constructed in 1956. In 1999, this property was granted a use permit for an entertainment establishment for Thumpers Bar &amp; Grill. The use was abandoned, and the use permit has since expired, as the building has been vacant in excess of two years. Commercial properties zoned D1-T4 are located to the south of the subject property. To the north, across King Street, is a religious institution that is zoned D1-T5. The main branch of the Portsmouth Public Library zone downtown T5 is located across Court Street to the east, and a city-owned parking lot is located to the west. The applicant obtained zoning approval to operate a restaurant at 600 Court Street in December of 2019. The existing approval includes solo and duo live entertainment, as well as outdoor dining. In conjunction with the restaurant use, the applicant is proposing to operate an entertainment establishment with live jazz, comedy, karaoke, and other live entertainment. The name of the establishment is Privilege Upscale Sports Bar and is projected to operate Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The applicant anticipates hiring 30 employees to staff the restaurant and entertainment establishment, and the project narrative indicates that the floor plan will allow for over 100 patrons. The city's building official will determine the final capacity and compliance with the building officials determined capacity has been included as a recommendation or a recommended condition of this use permit request. The applicant has not determined if any changes will be proposed to the exterior of the existing structure, and staff has informed the applicant that any future exterior alterations will require a, an approved certificate of appropriateness from the Downtown Design Committee. Staff recommends approval of the use permit request with the recommended conditions for an entertainment establishment at 600 Court Street. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate in this location. No public comments were received regarding this application thus far, and this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, we will move to our second staff presentation. This is on use permit 22-02, and Stacy Porter will make that presentation.
I'm Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I provide an overview of the applicant's request, and I'll read our caption. Travis and Toya LLC, doing business at As Notorious Lounge, requests a use permit for an entertainment establishment at 6263 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property containing the proposed business is known as the Manor Village Shopping Center, which is located along Portsmouth Boulevard's mixed-use corridor. The property is a neighborhood mixed-use NMU, is approximately 5.6 acres in size, and contains a commercial shopping center that was developed in 1973. The proposed business currently occupies an end unit within the shopping center and operates as a restaurant known as Notorious Lounge. Today's proposal is a request to allow for various forms of entertainment within this establishment. I will now provide an overview of the surrounding area. To the north is the Elizabeth Acres and Pine Acres Neighborhood. To the east is the Mayflower Park Neighborhood. All three neighborhoods are zoned urban residential U.R. and are primarily characterized by single-family residential development. To the south and west are various commercial businesses within the Manor Village Shopping Center, which includes Dollar General, an event center, and daycare center. All of these businesses are included in the neighborhood mixed-use NMU zoning district. This is the submitted floor plan submitted by the applicant, probably better viewed in your packets. The 3,200-square-foot restaurant provides up to 154, 55 indoor seats. The business currently operates Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Friday and Saturday, 4:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The applicant proposes to offer entertainment Thursday, Friday, and Saturday beginning at 8:00 p.m., and Sundays beginning at 12:00 noon. Types of entertainment would include paint nights, karaoke, bingo, comedy acts, sport and game nights, murder mystery dinners, trivia nights, poetry readings, and open-mic nights. In addition, the establishment will offer various event rentals, will offer event rental space to local groups and organizations. At full staff, Notorious Lounge will provide several employees, including a manager, assistant manager, bartenders, ABC managers, chefs, custodians, hosts, and several waitresses. The Manor Village Shopping Center contains approximately 220 surface parking spaces, of which are shared by the various businesses. The zoning ordinance requires 13-vehicle parking spaces and two bicycle spaces for the applicant's proposed entertainment establishment. Should the use permit receive an approval, the applicant will be required to provide the required parking. Staff finds that the proposal complies with the goals and recommendations of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, as the proposed use complies with the property's compact center, character area designation, and would provide potential job opportunities, which would strengthen the local economy. The proposed entertainment establishment immediately abuts a single-family residential neighborhood. Provided all entertainment remains internal to the structure, and the facility remains in compliance with the use-specific standards for entertainment establishments found in Portsmouth City Code 40.2-217G4B. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request with the conditions listed in the staff report. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter?
I do. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
On the floor plan that was submitted by the applicant-
Yes.
It looks like there's two rear doors-
Okay.
Three front doors-
Okay.
And a side door.
Gotcha.
So, under 10 proposed conditions in our packet-
Yes.
It only references, number four. It only references rear doors shall be used for emergency exits and deliveries only and shall not be propped open during hours of operation. Is it possible to add side door as well?
Absolutely. Please feel free to propose that during the public hearing. You can add side doors, as well as the rear doors.
Have you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Have you received any comment from any of the businesses or residences?
Sure. We did receive comments from a couple of residences. Just for the record, I don't think we have our court reporter yet, but we did receive a couple of emails from residences, and we forwarded those to you all for your perusal. But I did not receive any comments from any neighboring businesses.
Do you know if they are permitted to have benches or seating out in front of the establishment?
They have not requested that, or have been approved for that, but they'd have to request it through the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Porter?
I do. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
On the floor plan that was submitted by the applicant-
Yes.
It looks like there's two rear doors-
Okay.
Three front doors-
Okay.
And a side door.
Gotcha.
So, under 10 proposed conditions in our packet-
Yes.
It only references, number four. It only references rear doors shall be used for emergency exits and deliveries only and shall not be propped open during hours of operation. Is it possible to add side door as well?
Absolutely. Please feel free to propose that during the public hearing. You can add side doors, as well as the rear doors.
Have you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Have you received any comment from any of the businesses or residences?
Sure. We did receive comments from a couple of residences. Just for the record, I don't think we have our court reporter yet, but we did receive a couple of emails from residences, and we forwarded those to you all for your perusal. But I did not receive any comments from any neighboring businesses.
Do you know if they are permitted to have benches or seating out in front of the establishment?
They have not requested that, or have been approved for that, but they'd have to request it through the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Porter?
I do.
Let's go on.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Is there a smoking area provided in the restaurant, or would they need to go outside?
I'll tell you, I'm not sure of the code requirements of smoking indoors. I'm not familiar. But we certainly could ask the applicant what they do for smokers. I'm not sure.
Okay. It was just, it was just hard to see on the plan.
Sure.
I couldn't get it larger, but I will ask them that.
Yes.
And also, one more thing. The establishment is currently operating now as a restaurant.
They are.
Okay. Now, and they're open late at night.
They are.
So they're able to play, or I guess not play, what types of entertainment are they allowed to do, provide now?
Okay. Could I get some assistance from our assistant director?
So, as a restaurant, they can have a duo or a solo, not a DJ, but a duo or a solo performer, and they can play ordinary, like jukebox music. They cannot have any other forms of entertainment. Can't have dancing, can't have, you know, anything that involves human interaction. That is not permitted. And of course, anything, you know, having to do with noise is not regulated under the zoning ordinance. That would be under the city's noise ordinance. But they can't have any entertainment that involves people, other than a solo performer or a duo performer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, with this, I guess they could be permitted to have a band?
If the use permit is approved by City Council, they could have a band. A band, yes.
Okay. And the complaints that we have, the copies from the emails, that's based on just what is existing now as a, as a restaurant, apparently?
Supposedly.
Correct. Correct.
You could certainly talk to the applicant about what they've been offering since they've been open.
Sure.
But supposedly is how we'll say it.
Okay. Okay. I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, we did have a situation where, and I'm not sure what, you know, what was exactly the entertainment on the interior of the building, but we did get some complaints and contacted the operators of the facility, and that's what led to the application for the use permit. I don't think they were clear on what they were allowed exactly to do prior to that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Ms. Porter, thank you.
All right.
Yes, Commissioner, that is all we have for you this afternoon before the regular meeting.
Commissioners, are there any other items we need to discuss during the work session? If none, the work session is concluded. We'll meet for our regular meeting at 1:30. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, being held in the City Council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams-
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton-
Present.
Commissioner Coleman-
Here.
Commissioner Page. Commissioner Barnes-
Here.
Commissioner Curry.
Present.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the January 4th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2022.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams-
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton-
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman-
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes-
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their March 8th, 2022, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item is UP-22-01 Downtown. Marlin Mulligan of Realty Property Group 757 requests a use permit for an entertainment establishment in a restaurant and sports bar on a 0.087-acre parcel located at 600 Court Street in the downtown D1-T4 urban center zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by Louise Esther Group and is identified as Tax Map 13, Parcel 17. Will the applicant or a representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good evening.
The narrative for the business is a upscale sports bar. The building has previously been a sports bar from 1999 to 2014, and we're bringing a different look, something better in the old-town section, with more like an upscale vibe. Got the idea from my nephew, who plays with the Dallas Mavericks. When I fly out to see him at the sports arena, it's more like box weeks, or I like detail, more detailed, upscale with it. I spoke with, we had a meeting with the city manager, the police chief, and economic development in regards to old-town safety. And the meeting went pretty well, and she just was explaining the situations that they had at different venues or establishments down there, and it went pretty well with it. But we spoke with different organizations just down there, like Mercy Drops, the Big Homie Organization, which we happen to have kids come through to help with the cleanup and stuff. At Mercy Drops, we got something that we're going to put in effect with them as far as feeding the homeless as well, too. But the establishment, as we can say, I spoke with, we got a meeting with Portsmouth Glass and a studio soundproof company to do testing and to advise us for soundproofing the building, because that was one of the requirements that was, that the Planning Commission wanted. And pretty much, you should probably have in your package what we're presenting, hiring between 30 to 50 people. And that's basically it, as far as the narrative, as the status that we want. There's something that's already, had previously been there, but we just fell two years out of the, of the zoning, I guess zoning requirements from the first zoning before they changed the ordinance. From, yeah, I think it was from 1999 to 2015, it was granted to a Robert Connery for 600 Court Street, to approve by City Council. But we failed two years out of there. Just a second.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Mulligan?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. In the, in the narrative that we got, the staff report, it, I don't think it mentioned that you would be doing, I guess, for the community events, Mercy Drops, what you were talking about. Would the, the restaurant or the sports bar be closed? Would they be renting that area? Or how would that-
No. He feeds on Tuesdays, and the Big Homie Organization and Mercy Drops, and I helped out with Big Homies Organization, which is approved through the city, which is a partner with the city of Portsmouth, and Mercy Drops is a partner with them, but we see them on Tuesdays when they feed the homeless. So, we went and talked, and I let them know I was a trustee at St. Mark, and he was telling me about his mission. And then I said, hey, look, how can we partner as far as trying to maybe get another day out here? And he said, well, hey, look, we can put something together and go ahead and see if we can get that done. But he was very helpful. And not knowing that he knew my other friend that had the Big Homie Organization, which helped mentors and do a lot of stuff with the neighborhood swanson homes and stuff, and provide after-school programs like that, he was like, oh, yeah, he's a good guy that y'all can partner with to do it. But he comes on Tuesday and feed them, and I'm like, hey, look, it wouldn't cost us too much to probably pick up another day that you got. Yeah, but he seemed like a good, yeah, they seemed like a good organization that does that, though.
Okay. You're, it would just be the, the feeding. You wouldn't have any tutoring or any, any other activities, childcare, or anything like that?
No, no. We do the tutoring is with Big Homies. That's like, I helped him with the Christmas programs that we just had, so all of that is done at different facilities. Yeah, but that there is just going to be mainly like he's, it was something that I seen, and I just seeing him, I was like, hey, I like that, because they was actually feeding out the back of the truck. And I was like, hey, look, man, even if it's something that we can put together as a to-go, like, hey, look, we got trays today, and, you know, he, I guess he gave them Chick-fil-A and different stuff like that, but it was a good look.
Sure.
It was a real good look.
Sounds like a good partnership.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good look, yeah.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Mulligan? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-01. I do have one registered speaker. As I call your name, would you come forward? You have up to five minutes to speak. Nick Muller.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Mueller, 202 North Street, Portsmouth. Lived here for a few years. Today, in this capacity, I represent the Vestry, the board members of the church, Trinity Episcopal Church, just to the right of here. And I don't know, can I, can I ask just to go back to this, probably the site, yeah, that's, yes, the site plan's fine. So, really, I like the idea, and I'm glad the gentleman brought up the idea of partnership, because I think ultimately, this is zoned for restaurants and such. I'd like to make sure we have on the record our concern. From the position of the church, we have a parish hall that, pretty much the main entry of that parish hall backs up to that large parking garage, or parking lot there on King Street. Currently, Portsmouth has, or, sorry, Trinity pays for four or five, I think five, permanent spots there annually to the city. Other spots are labeled different organizations and businesses around there. So, I guess to be clear, as we have potentially weddings that go into the evenings or late afternoons, you can imagine this parish hall gets used by a lot of other things, other than the church. The Civic League gets hosted there monthly. I know there's other community outreach programs with regards to some school programs, maybe even some homeless efforts, that kind of conduct their business out of there during the day. So we are concerned about, hey, how does that parking lot function going forward and the availability that we have specifically on Sunday? So I know the hours were stated, and just to clarify, Monday through Sunday, 8:00 to 2:00 a.m. So 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So, maybe that, maybe I heard wrong, but if that's Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., that obviously would be a conflict. We have 8:30 services and 10:30 services on Sunday. What else? The trash, I know, that's great, too, feeding the homeless and having, having that. Right now, whether or not there are things, and whatever's happening on Friday nights, Saturday nights before church on Sunday, but I am the junior warden on the Vestry, there is trash just all over that area of King Street, all the way down. So as you're approaching the front door of the parish hall, it's just littered with trash. That's just on a normal Sunday. So if we're feeding groups, as long as there's receptacles, that they're used, trash is policed. We had a gun show up in our parking lot six months ago. The police were called, they removed it. So, I didn't want to get into all, too many of the eaches, but just to make sure you understand, the church is concerned. Not that the business will be successful, I think they will be, but let's, can we, can we come to some agreements in the future of understanding how we can work that parking situation with our events? And I guess, as it was stated earlier, the parking area is city's property. So how does the city, then, plan to reposition the parking for use of this establishment? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
May I ask something else?
Yes, sir.
The first initial one that we went in front of, where they had a different zoning. We, the first one, when we went in before, the first planning, before they went, made us-
went and made us go back to the BZA, what I stated in the, I think it was the BZA meeting, on Sundays, we want to open until 1 o'clock to give their, and that's recorded, to give their congregation first priority on parking. And that was for Sunday. And that's, that, that is included in the narrative that we gave for the, to the BZA. And I just didn't have it here. But for Sunday, we was willing to open anywhere from 12 to 1 o'clock to give their congregation the first priority for parking.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on U.P.-22-01. If there is anyone who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Guy Ross. I'm a native of Portsmouth. I live at 410 Crawford Street. I'm also a member of the Vestry at Trinity Church. It belonged to the Craddock Community Development Corporation. And I'm here in, with a lot of questions about this application. First of all, my question is the appropriateness of this particular kind of business contiguous to a church. The gentleman very kindly said that their hours of operation would be sensitive to Sunday services. And I would simply point out that this is a vibrant congregation, a vibrant parish, with, with events and meetings going on virtually every evening of the week. We don't just simply meet on Sundays. Our continuing issues have been with trash. For us, the straw that broke the camel's back was the discovery of the gun in the parking lot. These ad hoc events have been a big problem with the, the Civic League. The church also has a keen interest in the parking lot and has been talking to the city about more rentals there in the parking lot. So this is not a, you know, just only-on-Sunday situation. I think it is, I think we need to look at the appropriateness of a business like this contiguous to the oldest church in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is, I'm, sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, I have no other registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward. You have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Terrell Epps. I was speaking on behalf of the actual business that will be located on 600 Court Street. My partner, Marlon Mulligan, he had an obligation after this, so he kind of got interrupted. He didn't know how long that the meeting would, you know, actually be set for. But I just wanted to, you know, address some of the issues and the concerns that Trinity, the church, had. Being that parking is an issue for them, we know that Sundays are one of the main days that they actually function. But we would be definitely, you know, opening, well, we're actually open to, you know, flexibility for them to have whatever they need accommodation-wise for parking and things of that sort. And as far as like the trash and stuff like that, we haven't, well, we're not even in a stage, we're still in the business, well, the building stage of the business right now. So as far as like trash, we could allocate certain people to address the actual like trash issues and things of that sort.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P.-22-01. Is there anyone else who would like to address this application? You have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, the chair is in need of a motion for U.P.-22-01 with conditions.
Hi, I'd like to make a motion for approval for U.P. 2201 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve U.P.-22-01 with conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, U.P.-22-02, Hodges Manor. Travis and Toya LLC, doing business as Notorious Lounge, request a use permit for an entertainment establishment at 6263 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property is zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU and is further identified as Tax Map 620, Parcel 2. The generalized future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel as part of a mixed-use corridor. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Latoya. I'm one of the owners of Travis and Toya LLC. And what we would like to do is to add entertainment to the restaurant, as we have seen, unfortunately. That is very hard to attract patrons to the city of Portsmouth through to the tunnel. So we have gotten with our team and tried to think of different things that we can do to get patrons to want to come back. And the biggest thing now, the trending world, is a restaurant that has entertainment. Me being a big traveler, I know when I go places, when I go to a restaurant, I'm looking for an experience. We want to provide people with an experience when they come to the restaurant, not just solely food. Now, social media is very big. When people go somewhere and something attractive is going on, what is the first thing they do? They take a picture. When they take a picture, they upload to social media, then more people know about your base, so then you have free advertisement. So one of the things that we would like to do to add entertainment is be able to host a variety of events. Paint nights, karaoke nights, comedy nights, sports and game nights, murder mysteries, that's something new that I've seen. You know, Valentine's Day is coming up, doing something particular for Daddy Daughter Dance, Mother-Sun Dance, Couples Dance, trivia night, poetry night, open-mic night, wine tasting, live podcasts is the new thing that's out. We would like to also be able to support the community, let them come in and do things. I'm a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and they have inquired several times about, you know, coming together to do things together. And I said, okay, well, let me figure out what do I have to do to be able to support the community. My grandmother lives directly behind the building. She talked about bringing it to the Civic League to see, can they, you know, use the building sometime? So we want to be able to support the community and also be able to put Portsmouth on a larger scale when it comes to entertainment. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions from this here?
I'm sorry. Besides noise complaints, have you ever had any issues with your club?
Oh, well, no, it's not a club. It's a restaurant. No, it's okay. And I know unfortunately that, I think that's the impression that people have. But we are definitely more, we're not even, we're not trying to be a club. We just want to be a restaurant that is allowed to have entertainment. And as far as the noise complaint, we did hire a contractor, and I do have proof right here, that actually while we're here, before I got here, we installed soundproof barriers. And they're still installing that now. This is a picture of before. This is a picture of after. And we're willing to soundproof as much as the area as we can. You know, I live in the neighborhood, too, and I don't want to be disturbing my home, so that's not the goal, to ever disturb anyone. And I used to be an educator. So I, I know how to talk to people and how to work with people and come to a happy medium. So we actually have a neighbor who lives directly beside it, maybe 100 feet away. He's, she's never complained. Her and her husband, they come over, they enjoy the music, they enjoy the feud. They've given us several suggestions on things they can do. They're wonderful patrons. Unfortunately, the only neighbor that I know that has complained lives actually across the interstate of Portsmouth Boulevard. She can't even see the establishment from her home. So I, I just can't see how she can even hear if we was to have any type of entertainment, considering you're living across four lanes of traffic. But outside of that, we are pretty welcome in the neighborhood and we're glad to be there.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
I've got a couple. Thank you. When did you officially open for business?
I believe the first week in November, November the 5th.
Okay. So what are you offering your patrons now?
Right now, we're offering a happy hour. We offer regular restaurant food. We offer a bar experience. We offer brunch on Sundays.
Okay. And moving forward, what are your hours of operation going to be?
Right now, they will stay the same. Right now, we're, we actually were open four days a week, but due to the lack of patrons, we're only open three days a week, which is Friday, 4 to 1. Saturday, we're not even opening up to about 5 o'clock. And then Sunday, we're just open for brunch, 11 to 5.
Okay. In your narrative, it stated that you have subcontracted a security company. Is that correct?
Correct, G7.
Okay. And will they be there full-time when you expand your hours?
Yes, we have a contract with them. And they actually come now for happy hour because it gets dark earlier. They come now at 5 o'clock just to be as proactive as we can be to ensure the safety of the staff and all patrons.
Okay. That's it, but Mr. Mueller, I would like to make a motion, if I could, please, or add a condition, or do I wait?
Sure, why don't we wait until we get to that point of making a motion and a condition?
Okay.
Commissioners, are any additional questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. As far as on the floor plan, I did not see an area for smoking. And I was just wanting to see how you might address that in your restaurant.
We don't do smoking.
Okay.
No, we don't allow smoking.
Okay, okay. Are you having an area out front?
No, we, we try, you know, because we don't do smoking.
Okay, okay. And just one more thing. As far as the, the events that you're having, it looks like you're open to a pretty wide group. So, so that's a plus.
Thank you.
I wanted to see about, are you selling tickets at the door? Is that something that's going to be?
That would be nice to be able to do, so we can be able to staff properly and know how many people we will be expecting. That would be one of the reasons that we would like to have the entertainment added to the establishment. For instance, if we wanted to do a comedy show, we would want to sell tickets in advance because you have to sometimes pay for that act upfront. And that would help us pay the deposit by being able to pre-sell tickets.
Okay.
But we probably would use Eventbrite for that.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
Yes, I have one. Is there an age requirement that you allow on the days that you're open?
Well, for brunch, it's a, it's more of a family establishment, so anyone could come to brunch. My son is eight years old. He comes, he enjoys it. There's no age requirement. Of course, when we get towards maybe the later part of the night, we do require 25 and up. We're really 25 for the ladies, 30s for the guys. You know, ladies are a bit more mature, so we can lower the number on the ladies.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P.-22-01. I have no other registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Travis Johnson. I'm one of the other owners of Notorious Lounge. And just to piggyback off of what she said, we are trying to make it an entertainment because we're trying to bring jobs to the city of Portsmouth. You know, because Portsmouth is a city that we feel like is dying slowly. There's no entertainment. There's really nothing here. Like, you know, the closest thing here is across the tunnel, and, you know, people don't want to keep doing that. Needless to say, we're not just entrepreneurs, we're serial entrepreneurs. So we own successful businesses throughout Hampton Roads. And so this is nothing less of just us trying to bring, you know, jobs and awareness to the city because we are both from the city of Portsmouth, born and raised. And I currently still reside in the city of Portsmouth. And, you know, it's just a struggle to me to have to get on an airplane just to go to get entertainment. It's really nothing in the 757 as a whole, you know, to be quite frankly honest. So by me and her traveling a lot, seeing things that goes on in other cities and other places, you know, we feel like we can incorporate from, you know, what we see other places all into one. But we can't do that if we're not zoned entertainment. We want to do things right, you know, we want, don't want to be a flat-by-night company. We in it for the long run, not short term. So we just trying to come before you guys to do it, you know, the correct way. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P.-22-02. If there's anyone else who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes, sir. Under 10 of proposed conditions, number four, I would like to add side door. It appears that it has two back doors or rear doors and three front doors and one side door.
Could you read exactly what that states?
Yes, sir. Rear doors shall be used for emergency exits and deliveries only and shall not be propped open during hours of operation.
And you would like to add?
I would like to add side doors.
Okay. Then the chair is in need of a motion for U.P.-22-02 with the conditions and the additional condition as stated. Is there a motion?
Okay, I make a motion for U.P.-22-02 with conditions as spoken with the side doors.
Commissioners, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to approve U.P.-22-02 with the additional conditions as stated by Commissioner Thaxton. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further additional business that we need to conduct? Mr. Barnes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have no further business.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.